Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now six sixteen P. M., and I will call this special budget work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. The city clerk will note that Councilmember Keely is absent, and tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person if they so desire, or the public can also view this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Channel Comcast Channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting packet webpage and in the council agenda packet. Our work sessions, we go directly to the items that we will be addressing this evening. And our deputy city manager and CFO Jenny Brody is going to be presenting the CIP. This is our capital improvements plan. City Manager Lindberg, do you have any comments to make before CFO Deputy City Manager Brody?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Tonight continues our 2025 budget process. We'll be discussing the 2025 through 2029 Capital Improvement Plan, our capital budget. Just by way of a reminder for you and for the community, all of the materials, the information that we'll be walking through tonight is available to the community on our budget portal. That's burnsvillemn.gov.
You're gonna have to fix that before.
And just to, just as another reminder in terms of timing, this presentation this evening will be followed by several additional budget conversations in the month of August, all leading up to your max tax decision, what we've historically called your max tax decision. That's your preliminary budget and your preliminary levy. That's the number at which you can go down from, but you can't go up, and that will happen on September seventeenth. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jenny. Jenny's gonna facilitate the presentation tonight, and obviously, our directors are around the table. It takes a team to put our capital budget, to put our budget as a whole together, and that has very much been what we've been doing the past month on this proposed CIP. So Jenny will make the presentation. If you have questions, she will likely involve other members of the team to get into anything specific that you might want to talk about. And I will turn it over to Jenny.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. As Greg mentioned, tonight, we are discussing the 2025 through 2029 Capital Improvement Plan. This is the kind of the second work session following the Financial Management Plan presentation in March. So we'll review that and also receive guidance and feedback from the council on the information you see tonight. Building off of 2024, when we first accelerated and enhanced our CIP process, we continued that, those enhancements this year with, you know, continued accelerated timeline, you know, more detailed information review as we put this together, and really continued city manager and leadership team meetings. As Greg said, it takes a team to put this together, and everyone here at this table has worked, worked hard on putting that information together for tonight. In 2024, we identified that we needed more information to better inform our short-term and long-term capital plans and really to help the council make budget decisions long term. So last year, we identified six major capital studies. Those studies are ongoing. We've, we've, those will inform our future, our, this capital plan as well as future capital plans, really to help us with data-driven decision-making, as well as just giving us more, giving more detail, more information, more data to make those decisions. We haven't, we haven't always had that information, so as we're putting this together, we're still working on those capital studies. We anticipate, you know, completion of those really around 2028. Things take, things are probably taking a little longer as we go through those. We're learning more about, learning more about each area as we continue those studies. We also want to do annual updates so that we're continuously updating that information as we inform our capital plans going forward. Currently, the six studies that we haven't, that we, that we, you know, have ongoing, we have the water treatment plant condition assessment that we reviewed in May of 2024, the parks plan that you saw in June of 2024, the pavement management plan is planned for presentation in October of 2024, as well as the fleet study in November of 2024. You'll be, you'll be seeing in early, sometime, we think in early 2025, an informational tech, information technology master plan, as well as a municipal facilities inventory. So those are the tentative schedules for those plans and the completion dates. As we get that information, those will be used to inform this, obviously, this capital budget, as well as future capital budgets. Additionally, you know, we're looking at other areas, and I think as we, as we continue to learn more information, we'll bring more studies as we identify those. The 2025 plan, the FMP identified a seven point oh six year-over-year tax increase, so we're, we're balancing to that target, and our process is set up to meet that target. Again, unpredictable conditions are really presenting a challenge to that budget as those, as those targets were set, you know, in 2023. There's a lot of different pressures that we've encountered since then that are really kind of challenging, challenging the budget in terms of, of that making that target. What we have included in the budget is responsible to, is really responsible to support our current operations, as well as future planning. So we're looking, we want to be future-focused as we're putting this information together and really thinking about, thinking about the future and our long-term planning. 2025 realities, again, as I mentioned, we've had some, we've had challenges. Unprecedented inflationary pressures really continue to challenge the CIP. What, as we review each fund in detail, we'll talk about some of those kind of individual challenges, as well as increasing demands for services. We've got increasing demand, which creates the need for additional capital investment, especially in our area, our vehicles and equipment area. Also, the way or the amount of use equipment's getting is, is making it challenging in terms of we have to replace things sooner, so things are wearing out faster. So that's also a challenge in the future, and now we have to prioritize in order to have a sustainable financial future. Here is an overall snapshot of the Capital Improvement Plan as it's currently proposed. This is about, over five years, about a hundred ninety-eight million dollar investment in capital compared to the same or a five, or last year's five-year period was about a hundred ninety million. So that's about an eight million dollar increase, about four percent. So, so it's a, you know, that same five-year period, we've got an additional eight million dollars in capital investment. This does not include the proposed Police City Hall project at this time, as council's considering that in separate discussions.
The separate funding mechanism, that's why this is.
Just kind of a review of here, we wanted to present, kind of have a list of all the cap, all the funds that have capital investments as a part of their expenditures. These funds on this page, these seven funds generally are considered levy-funded. The Forestry Fund, Infrastructure Trust Fund, Improvement Construction, kind of, kind of is very tied to the Infrastructure Trust Fund, as those are two street, street construction funds. The levy is included in the I T F fund, while grant and assessment funding is, is run through the Improvement Construction Fund, but they're very closely related. The Street Maintenance Fund, Parks Renovation, Equipment and Vehicle, and Information Technology. So generally speaking, these funds are mostly, a majority of the funding in these funds comes from property tax levy. The Special Revenue and Enterprise Funds, these are other revenue sources, or utility funding, or charges for services, user fees. We've got Parks Investment has Parks Dedication Fees, as well as Facilities Fund has Utility Franchise Fees, and the Cable Fund is funded through Cable Franchise Fees. So these funds all have capital investment included in their expenditures, but they are funded not, not through the levy, but through other types of revenue source. Tonight, we'll look at, when we look at the five-year, five-year financial projections, we'll talk about, we'll talk about the capital in most of these funds. We'll look at the five-year projections for most of the levy-funded funds. The other funds will be reviewed either in the, in August with Operations Levy or Levy Discussion, or with the Fee Discussion in September. So just kind of wanted to, wanted to talk about that a little bit. The first fund we'll talk about tonight is the Parks Renovation Fund. So last year, we just, we talked about this, that we were splitting these two, this fund. There was a kind of a combined Parks Capital Fund in the past. We did split that fund into two separate funds, one being the Parks Renovation Fund. That really is accounting for the maintenance and repair and investment in our existing parks and trails. That's, that's what we're talking about here. And then we took and, and separated out Parks Dedication Fees, and that is accounted for in a Parks Investment Fund, and we'll, we'll talk about that fund next. But for 2025 and the Parks Renovation Fund, much of this is informed by the Parks Plan. So as we talked about when we took, we discussed the Parks Plan, we're gonna prioritize the replacement of those Condition One and Two items, or those items that, that are in the lowest or the, kind of the worst shape at this time. We'll remove non-relevant amenities, non-relevant amenities at the end of life, so looking at what's out there, what's no longer being used, what can, what should be removed, and we'll complete future studies to inform future projects. So really do a, a park visioning process to really inform the long-term plan for the parks system. Major 2025 projects, right now, we've targeted spending in these areas as, as we looked at the Parks Plan, so a million dollars in playgrounds, five hundred thousand dollars in pavement, and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in play surfaces. So over the next, over the next month or so, we'll be really reviewing those individual Condition One and Two areas, and targeting specific projects in specific parks, and those will be included in the Capital Improvement Plan. But right now, here's, this is kind of how we've targeted that spending. Additionally, we're gonna look at three hundred thousand dollars as a one-year offset in this fund to fund capital studies, or some of the additional studies that we talked about when we reviewed the Parks Plan. I know we talked about, we've got the Visioning Study, also Recreation Operation Study, and like a Wayfinding Study, as well as an Operation and Maintenance Study. So those are all scheduled and planned for in, within the three hundred thousand.
How many parks are going to have playground equipment replaced with that million dollars?
We haven't specifically identified parks yet. I, I do believe.
So you're looking at the study that we had one and twos?
Yeah, we're looking at those one and twos, and then we'll be identifying specific parks to match up with that. So that final number may not be exactly a million dollars, but we're, we're looking at that range to, to make that investment there.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a good question. Peel behind the curtain of the staff process to get to this point tonight. We still have, this is the one fund where we probably have the most work to do still. So we identified these targets informed by Garrett's team collaborating with Public Works, kind of talking through the Condition One and Two items, and, and I'm gonna use the word triage, I'm using it carefully, but really identify the most important needs to take care of what we have. The conversation that we've had as a team is it's important for us now that we have the data to really get out in the park system and, and care for what we have, do what we said we were gonna do when we presented the Parks Plan, which is address those Condition One and Two items. To specifically answer your question, staff had presented back to me and the executive team about one point three, one point four million dollars worth of playground replacements for this year that represented ten playground replacements. And we had some conversation about pavement deterioration, bituminous, both in parking lots and in trail segments. And the concern from our perspective, or the conversation that we've been having, is there are likely some segments that due to safety and just user experience, we need to get to sooner rather than later on the bituminous side of things. So we, we upped the target on pavement and, and took some of that potential investment in playgrounds and set these targets. Again, we're still in the process, Garrett, Mark, myself, Jenny, and our teams of talking through what the specifics might be there. But we think these are good targets. These are good aspirations to say perhaps somewhere in the neighborhood of six to eight playgrounds could get done, just using rough math, also then allowing us to, to deal with some of the, both parking lot and park, trail, bituminous conditions that need to be addressed.
And I'm glad that I see play surfaces, because when I did my review of all of the seventy-six parks, there were a lot of play surfaces that were really in bad shape.
We have twenty-nine tennis courts across, across twelve of our parks. I visited each and every one of them this weekend. It was a fun tour, so I've got a list if you ever want to do it.
Hugo and I already did it.
We do have plenty of play surfaces, and we, we think that this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars will get us, will give us the ability to recondition rehab between three and four of those sites. So there's usually multiple tennis courts at, at a particular site. It varies from one to six plus, but.
And that's good both courts.
We think it will be able to really start addressing, certainly start addressing the Condition One and Two assessments this year with that target.
And our intention would be to include specific projects in the CIP document that we release, so that we're not gonna just have placeholders for those items. We include specific projects for 2025.
Well, the Parks Facilities Plan informed what you're doing right here.
Yes.
And Mayor and Council, I think it's, I think it's important to note, both for you and for the community, we've spent the past decade or so planning well for our capital improvements and capital budgeting. Five-year plans that address needs as those needs have been identified. With our shift to being very data-driven, the studies, particularly the Parks Plan, I think it's one of the best out there, compliments to our team who spent a lot of time doing it. Now that we have that data, we are making a transition in our capital budgeting, in our CIP, from going, from what I'm calling placeholders. Generally speaking, the types of numbers you're seeing frankly in front of you on this screen, targets or, or buckets of money that would address projects, to a very specific project basis. So the capital budget, as it's presented to you in its final form, for your consideration, will have those projects listed out, park by park, location by location, very specific amenities. So we're, we're all very clear on what projects we're doing, what money we're using to make those investments, and what the return on that investment will be in terms of, in this case, operations and maintenance of the park system, but that, that could be any number of, of different metrics along our capital budgets. That'll be an important, and it, and frankly, a, a time-consuming and laborious task. It's part of the reason we're not quite done here. There's just a lot of, a lot of conversation and a lot of work to make that happen and to start making that shift in our capital budget. But the, the effort will be worth the return.
Some key assumptions in this fund. This fund, as we mentioned before, is, is funded by primarily property taxes. This assumes an annual three percent increase in the levy through 2027, and six percent in 2029, eight and 2029. This fund also receives host community fee revenues from the landfill. They are split between three of our capital funds. This, this fund will receive approximate, we're budgeting about six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in, in landfill host fees in 2025. Here's a snapshot of the five-year plan for this fund. The gray lines are the expenditures, planned expenditures, the blue lines being the revenues. That black line is showing actual fund balance with, with the blue line across going, our fund balance requirement or target in that fund. Twenty twenty, in 2024, you can see a large expenditure that really is the transfer out or the outflow of money to the Parks Investment Fund of those Parks Dedication Fees. You'll see a corresponding, increase or a funding source in the Parks Investment Fund.
So for the longest time, I've been concerned about the Parks Fund, simply because we don't have any more park dedications come in. I don't believe that there is any properties that's going to need any park dedication fees. We do know of one that's still in court and might come back for their surveys, and then we can get some park dedication from that one, but I don't know. So the general fund is going to have to be taking care of the Parks Fund just.
Yeah, in this fund, this fund is, is actually the other side of that, the, the renovation improvements and maintenance side. So this side has, has the property tax levy, as well as the host revenues here, and this, you can see right now, at this level of investment, or our current level, where we're kind of taking care, you know, taking care of the things we have, or in this, this process where we're taking care of those kind of high criticality items. You can see our fund balance does remain at or above our requirement level, but we'll, we'll take a look at the Parks Investment Fund, and we can talk about, a little bit about Parks Dedication Fees and that fund. So, so for the five-year planning window, in terms of where the fund balance is, we are in a spot where we're, we are meeting our fund balance targets in this fund. For the Parks Investment Fund, so as we look at 2025 projects, we really have kept the projects that we included in last year's CIP really are carried forward here, so these, these are really nothing new, or nothing new has been proposed, because we're really waiting, waiting to prioritize, you know, where we want those future investments. So this, we do have a hundred thousand here for Lake Marion Trail Gap cost share, as well as ninety thousand for fiber insecurity in parks. Again, this fund, the, the major source of revenue here is Parks Dedication Fee and Fees, and it really does need to be used for new parks development, parks or trails investments. Key assumptions here, as we've, we've talked about, in the Parks Renovation Fund, our priority right now has been to take care of what we have first. So as you can see, we've done a lot of work on the, on the Parks Plan and kind of taking a look at where our current parks system is at. And then we'll, we'll look at making improvements based on community engagement. When we look at the five-year plan, you'll see fund balance available for projects is going to be about five point one million dollars, so that's what we anticipate having in the fund after any other investments are made. But we also know if we have some larger, larger projects that, that come, you know, that the council wishes to move forward on, we may have to look at other funding sources for this fund. As we know, Parks Dedication, as you mentioned, Mayor, is not sustainable over the long term. We haven't programmed in any assumption for large Parks Dedication Fees, because we're just, we just don't anticipate having those large revenues in the future.
I have a question, and this is to you and Jeff and Greg. So ROARs is purchasing those office buildings, and they're already paid a park dedication for those projects, correct? However, the use is changed, has changed, and now you're going to have people living there, and does our policies speak to when you've got residents? And is there more park dedication that's needed with the project because they need a park if they're gonna have families in there? Because I believe our, our policy speaks to that when we have housing, so.
Yeah.
Is there additional park dedication that's going to come out of that?
Mayor and Council, maybe first on just the, the general kind of application of park dedication requirements. So how we calculate the, the fee in lieu of park dedication is dependent on the use of the proposed development. So that will dictate what the fee is. So that's the, the fee, the fee in lieu calculation. How we're able to obtain park dedication, the mechanism through it is actually a statutory requirement under the subdivision requirement, and so we can only take, or we can only require park dedication or cash in lieu of park dedication in instances where they are subdividing property. And so that's the general framework of how the, our attorney has asked us to apply the statutory requirements. On the ROARs project specifically, they are subdividing that property, because they do need to combine the properties and rededicate all of the easements. And so there is a park dedication fee associated with that project, and that was included as a condition of the council's approval. And we received that park dedication then prior to the building permit being issued.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, because it's a change in use, and it was also a change in, in the subdivision.
Correct. And Mayor, it's really the, yes, it's, it's, but if there's just a change of use on a property, they're gonna take a property and change it from industrial to residential, but they're not subdividing it, although there may be a park impact, the statute doesn't allow us to require park dedication just for change of use.
That's a, that's a good distinction. It's, it's in the subdivision.
Correct.
Okay.
And here is a, a snapshot of the five-year projection in the Parks Investment Fund. So as you see, the funding source in 2024, in, on the blue line is really that transfer coming in to, to separate those two funds. Those were, those are really made up of Parks Dedication Fees that have been collected through 2024 and are on hand, and are, remain in this fund for future decisions on future projects. The blue line is ending fund balance, so as you can see, we're just a little over five million dollars over the five-year plan, with some small investments, like I said, in, in a, in that trail project, as well as some security upgrades at parks. And revenues in this fund really are, we have a very small placeholder for Parks Dedication Fees, because as we said, we don't anticipate a large number of parks that, or projects that would, would pay Parks Dedication Fees over the next five years. But any projects that do occur, if there are additional Parks Dedication Fees, will be deposited in this fund and available for future Parks Investment Projects. Next, I'll move on to the Equipment and Vehicle Fund. This fund has some significant, I'll just, you know, kind of preface this, we've had some significant challenges. We have significant pressures in this fund, and I think a lot of what we, we've already talked about kind of referenced some of the challenges we're having here. Major 2025 projects, currently, the two point two million for Mobile Command Center, three hundred and eighty-five thousand for replacement of patrol squad vehicles, four hundred thousand dollars for an ambulance, and eight hundred, eight hundred and ninety thousand, I think that's for two plow trucks. So that, those are, that's about, those four items there make up about sixty percent of the anticipated expenditures for 2025 in this fund. I think we have six point six million dollars in vehicle and equipment purchases.
I know that we approved the ambulance purchase.
Yep.
This evening, and, but that's not going to be delivered, Chief, in twenty-eight?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that, the ambulance that you approved tonight is actually authorizing payment. The truck is sitting in St. Paul that was ordered in 2022. The, we ordered an engine tonight.
Okay.
And that's not gonna be delivered until 2029.
Okay.
It's a fifty to fifty-four month lead time.
Yeah, because we had two.
Yep.
Vehicles from fire.
Yep.
Okay.
So we're, we're ordering a lot of these.
So payment for the ambulance is on for twenty-five, because that's already in St. Paul being equipped to be delivered.
Yep.
Okay. So then the one that we, the, the fire truck is not, we approved the purchase of it, but that's not delivered in, until 2029, and then that will come to, for payment then.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we'll, we'll deal with the payment when we, it'll come out of the 2029 budget, that's the, we're just ordering it now, we're not paying anything now, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Ben?
This might be getting into the weeds a little bit, but then how do we use, I'm assuming we'll sell our existing Mobile Command unit and squads at a pretty low rate compared to what we purchased them for, but does that get reconciled back? to what we purchased them for, but does that get reconciled back into this fund? Or how is that handled when we sell our used equipment?
When we sell any used equipment, the proceeds go back into this fund. And we have a, we budgeted about a hundred thousand annually for that, although I will say the last couple of years, I think our proceeds from sale of, you know, our used vehicles have been more in the sixty thousand dollar range.
How much depreciation does like a mobile command center have? Because I feel like, I mean, I suppose we're stripping all of our tech out of there, too, so you're just kind of selling the bones of it. But I feel like mileage wise, that's probably not going as far and often as a patrol squad. But I understand the marketplace. But I mean, how how close are we going to get on something like that compared to a squad or an ambulance?
With the technology, yeah, Chief, because I remember when we purchased that mobile command center.
Madam, members of the council, I don't know that we have a good estimate on that one, but I'll give you the perspective of a fire engine that we pay that a significant amount of money for, and we get twenty to thirty thousand trade in value. So I wouldn't expect much more out of the mobile command post. It's twenty years old, even though it doesn't have a high mileage utilization. It has a lot of years on it, and the reliability is less just with the amount of time the technology is twenty years old, right? Even though it's been refreshed, it's still, the bones of it are that old. So we don't find a great return on investment from a used perspective. Like, we use them to their full fullest life expectancy, right? Like, we're not turning them over and trying to sell them for somebody else's life expectancy.
And you're going to get what somebody's willing to pay for it at the end of the day.
Technology is really old, the software.
Collectors and things like that, you're not, or a very rural department, but they're not going to necessarily need a command post. So it's, the marketplace is very slim for some of that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think in the background, each and every background on all of these vehicles that we have, you either put them up on auction, or somebody is asking to purchase it from us. So there are two avenues that we use for all of that.
Could council members get first right of refusal if I needed something for a road trip to the South Dakota in July?
If Jared was sitting here, he'll say, no way.
The gas mileage like on that?
Yeah.
So don't let it recommend that.
I want the mobile command center.
Madam, members of the council, these are actually very good questions. The reality is, and I'm going to use Greg's terms, not the ones that our team who are smarter than I use, we get pennies on the dollar for much of our equipment, frankly. Part of the Jenny mentioned earlier that the vehicle and equipment fund is likely one of of the most, it is one of the most challenged funds that we have. Part of our presentation of the fleet study to you is to leave no stone unturned in thinking differently about our fleet. Councilmember Workman, your your question about the value of used vehicles is something that we're talking about in terms of replacement cycles. Frankly, in the past, in the past several years, we've had a hard time just getting vehicles. The police department is a is a good example of that. While it might, while it might sound outrageous that we're waiting four years for a fire engine, the reality is we haven't been able to get our hands on police cruisers to the to the spec and specification that is our preference. So the challenge with that is we're keeping vehicles longer because we need to, in this case, not to pick on, not to pick on the police department, but we need to patrol, we need those capital assets to to help our people do their jobs, which means that it's more miles, it's older vehicles, and in an even more challenging environment in terms of turning those around. To compound that issue, after those vehicles have gotten done in the past, serving their purpose in the police department, many have been repurposed for other city purposes. Said another way, part of how we've approached solving some of the challenge of this fund has been to use those vehicles even longer to suit other needs in recreation or in planning or, that's not a good example, but engineering is. So nevertheless, those are the types of problems, and I I'm intentional in calling them problems. Using vehicles that long has caused us some real operational challenges and challenges this fund. So it's our intention to really identify what do we need in terms of a fleet? And once we have that information, how can we be creative about different strategies to not, to to balance both needs and the financial pressures and not find ourselves in some of the operational challenges that we found ourselves in? That works going to take some time, and it's going to be different across our operations. It's going to look different in the fire department from the police department, from the public works department into city administration.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, additionally, some other challenges that that we've come across, I mean, that's one. I think, you know, keeping those vehicles longer when we do have to account for the full replacement cost of those, it really is driving, driving those expenses upward in the in the capital plan, as well as, I think I mentioned earlier, demand for services and shorter replacement schedules. So as we, you know, as we have a higher demand and we are staffing those demands, we have, we have needs in terms of additional additional equipment, additional vehicles, as well as, you know, using them more, we just have shorter, we're just going, we're faced with shorter replacement schedules. So that just, you know, increases that overall pressure on those expenses. Unprecedented inflationary increases. The next slide I'll go over in detail a couple of examples of that, as well as supply chain difficulties. So we're just not able to always, we're not able to get the vehicles we need when we need them. One of the things when we look at the five year plan, you'll see is we've got carryforwards from the last three years currently programmed in, you know, that we've carried forward and programmed in the twenty twenty four budget, and those are creating, you know, creating this, this just very large, very large balance or very large planned budget expenditure, and we just don't always know when we're going to get those. We've budgeted for them, we've carried forward those budgets, but oftentimes by the time we get the vehicles or we have need to pay for them, the price has gone up, right? And so then our budgets are short, we're, you know, looking to borrow from other projects when we can. But those are just some pressures that we're we're seeing right now in this fund. And as as Greg mentioned to to you earlier, that fleet study in November will help inform future plans, and and we're going to look at everything that we can and really try to be creative and try to look at every avenue in terms of of how to fund our fleet operations and equipment in the future.
So the six vehicles that we approved for police, I know it was in the CIP for from last year for this year. So we approved the purchase. How much time before you get those vehicles, Chief, after they're fitted? Because I understand that that's also a challenge.
How long it takes?
Yeah, because once, once it comes into our, our system, then Mark, your team, then upfits all of the vehicles?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe some of our vehicles, like here, this is fire or police, are sent to Everest for upfitting. It's just fire that's sent there. Okay. So I know for some of the squads, where do we already have the stuff in storage? And so they'll start putting them into, you know, building them up and putting them into service. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that turnaround time is.
And so Tom also has to put in all of the technology also into all of those automobiles?
We work alongside the fleet department to do it at the same time through that same cycle, so.
Because you're far behind on your, on need for your vehicles, correct? If I'm here, if I'm reading all the stuff correctly?
Yes, we could not get vehicles, that was one of the biggest problems. And then all agencies were having that difficulty in in getting them. And so as you look at gas or hybrid or whatever, you know, we were just trying to get, to get those, which we did. And then another thing with the vehicles, if no fire, those are sent out, but sometimes we will as well for specialty things like with behavioral health unit vehicles, so the canines can be in there, they need some special air conditioning and things like that. So then that sometimes gets sent out for for work as well, and so.
Okay.
Kind of use as many avenues as we can to get things back as quickly as we can.
Are all of the officers now equipped?
Yep. Yeah, we're working through that, and, you know, we're on a good replacement schedule. But yeah, sometimes you're at the mercy of like getting the actual vehicles, so.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, some more discussions we've been having about what's, what's the best way to do that as we look at the fleet study and what are some other ways, or just kind of exploring different options just to make sure like we've looked at everything that's possible.
It's great to have all of these studies, so we're well informed.
Madam, members of the council, one of the other changes we made as a team this year was to to decentralize the vehicle and equipment fund. So said another way, each department director had the opportunity to work directly with their staff and the fleet team to make sure that we weren't missing anything. So using the police example, Mayor, to your question, to make sure that our officers had the the amount of squads by shift, by need that were necessary. Again, that's where sometimes we have to extend out the amount of time we're keeping a squad. But nevertheless, my intention, our intention there is to make sure that every department has a voice, that every department has the ability to to manage the resources that they best see fit, and then rely on our experts in public works and our our fleet team to do to do their work and making sure those vehicles are ready for them, they're prepared, and they get into service.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Here's just a few examples of of individual vehicles and the inflationary pressures that we've seen, especially in the large vehicles. So the mobile command vehicle budgeted for twenty twenty five, there's a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in that from what was previously budgeted in previous CIPs or last year's CIP, four hundred thousand dollar increase or a forty percent increase for the twenty twenty six fire truck. So our twenty twenty two from twenty twenty six went up forty percent. An ambulance, a thirty six thousand dollar or ten percent increase for the twenty twenty five ambulance over twenty twenty four. So, you know, it is a little bit all over the board, we're seeing increases everywhere, but, you know, especially in those large vehicles, they really do have a big impact on those expenses in that fund.
Well, it's good for our citizens to realize that this is out of our control, these increases and the cost of these equipment is out of our control. But it's equipment that we need to do the work that's necessary.
And the important, Madam, members of the council, and the importance of planning because of that reality, perhaps BJ, if you wouldn't mind, you speak to the importance of the twenty twenty nine fire engine as an example, with some of the federal standards coming down the the road potentially?
Yeah, so it's not only that, that there's a fifty month lead time, but also with the the new emissions requirements in twenty twenty seven, that played a part of it. And then also the federal standards to try to eliminate diesel engines.
Yeah, the diesel.
Is that manufacturers are going to stop taking orders on diesel engines here relatively soon. So if we don't get an order and insecure chassis, then the cost of an electric fire truck is at least another million dollars on top of it, plus the infrastructure that you'd need at both fire stations and the maintenance facility to have that kind of apparatus. And frankly, Fire Station One wasn't built with that in mind. That wasn't a thing when we designed that. So, I mean, that's significant type of power that you would need to add. And just to give you some context, back in twenty fourteen, we bought the same brand fire engine for six hundred and twenty two thousand. In twenty twenty, we bought it for eight hundred and ten thousand, and now we're looking at one point four, one point five million for the same fire engine, and that's after value engineering. So we've actually taken things off the fire engine, so it's not even all of the same things that the previous fire engine had. And we don't have a robust fleet, right? We run pretty thin to the point where unfortunately last fall, I was calling our neighbors to try to borrow a fire engine because we didn't have any available because they were broke. So the reality is we're trying to run thin, but we want to make sure we have enough resources. And as the demand goes up, the need for those resources gets a little more strapped. And so like when we get this next fire engine next year, we're going to keep the oldest engine as another reserve engine just because we need it. The same thing with their ambulances, we're we're going to go and and keep the next two because we need it in order to make sure that we have enough in the rotation so maintenance can work on them, or if something breaks, we have time to fix it. Because the same thing happens on the repairs, right? The the parts for these vehicles aren't readily available either. It's not like you can just go to NAPA and pick up a piece of or a part for the fire truck. So we're getting strained in a number of different directions, both call wise, economically, and resources. So it's, it's kind of a lot of things hitting us at once, and it's amazing the cost, unfortunately, that we find ourselves in to buy one of these apparatus.
Well, I commend you and I thank you for paying attention to all that's coming down from the federal government because the background material spoke very well to that. And so we're getting ahead of that because we don't have the infrastructure in place for electric. And but you're ahead of the game here in ordering so we can still get the diesel before that that law rolls out. So I commend you and everybody for paying attention to all of these things because here it is, we're purchasing this new fire truck for one point four seven five, and the last one you said we purchased for?
Nine hundred and sixty four thousand.
So we can look at all of the increases, and these are pressures that we deal with that is out of our control. Vince?
At what point are we going to start preparing for implementing that and getting charge stations for massive fire engine batteries?
Madam, members of the council, so two things. First, in our in our current municipal facilities planning process, we are preparing for those facilities to be able to handle the load. One of the biggest challenges is the electrical service coming in and our need from an emergency perspective to have generators and other systems to provide backup if there are failures. So we are, we are looking at options while also being cautious about what the future really looks like. Said another way, we believe, in this case, the manufacturer for the for the fire apparatus does not plan currently to take orders for beyond twenty twenty nine. So that's an indication to us that something may change. We also don't want to get too far ahead of what actually happens. Said another way, we don't know that those regulations will come about, we don't know that they will be enforced. So we are, we are planning for a future where we're ready. We'll have to start looking at Fire Station One as an example, but right now in the municipal facilities project, we're planning as an example for Fire Two to be to be ready for that. We're also planning for police to be ready for electric vehicles. Not that we're wiring the whole thing or installing installing equipment that we don't feel is currently necessary, but we're making sure that things like the electrical service and the facility itself could handle it should it come.
And it will come.
Benefit of of working on those projects now is it's the most cost effective time to do that in a facility. Said another way, it's not a huge expense to the to the city, to our community for the police garage, as an example, to be ready for it. It's really a matter of electrical service at this point in time and making sure that we have things like conduit in place and and have the ability to pull wires and install the infrastructure should should that be necessary.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Vince?
He doesn't look satisfied.
Well, it's just, I'm not dissatisfied with your answer, it just, I'm annoyed at, I get, I don't know, I'm starting to get, I don't want to get political, so I'll just be quiet.
Okay.
And we are, we are trying to thoughtfully address the reality that there are, there are unfunded mandates, there are regulations coming at us from the federal government, from the state, from any number of of directions. And we can be responsible i- in our thinking and in our planning. The facilities projects right now allow us the opportunity to maybe do that more efficiently and effectively than if we weren't talking about having to meet those needs. And at the end of the day, we will absolutely be planning for those regulations to to take effect. Frankly, and I would look back to BJ on this, I don't know that we completely know what that would mean for us yet on the fire side of things, so we've got some work to do.
Well, you know, I can tell you that in my building, we're doing a study to put infrastructure in for electric vehicles because there are many of our residents who want electric vehicles because they look at the cost. And so I don't think that that's something that we're the only ones struggling with. I think it's all across the board. People are looking at electric vehicles, and I know of residents who are installing chargers in their homes.
I just, how long it takes to fully charge a sedan and contrast that to a fire I just, how long it takes to fully charge a sedan and contrast that to a firetruck? And you've got a call of a burning building, I just, there's a slippery slope there that I'm, I would, we don't need to go down here, but I would hope that the people that are making those decisions are thinking all of those things through before a mandate would come down the pipeline.
Yeah.
And Vince, I don't think you're getting political. I think you were concerned about the tactical implications, like how we implement it with so many variables up in the air and wondering about the impact on our residents. And there's no worries on that. You were not getting political, you were just, we're all getting hit in the face with it, and we're trying to come up with practical considerations of something that at the moment is not practical. So, yeah.
So my hope is that the power companies and the manufacturers of vehicles are all working together, and I know that they're all working together on solving this issue. But I commend our staff for the forethought of doing the things that we need to do right now to make sure that we have the next firetruck, even though it's not going to be delivered until 2029, because of the 50- to 53-month delivery time that they have. But at the same time, it also helps us to get in before the rollout of the new federal regulations. So thank you to all of you. Jenny?
All right. Some key assumptions in the Equipment and Vehicle Fund. We have an annual 3% levy increase right now through 2027 with 6% scheduled for 2028 to 2029. A reminder, this was a decision we discussed last year, one-time public safety aid of $2.8 million was deposited in this fund, as well as an assumption of local government aid, of $426,000 annually is programmed in this fund. We assume, we, oh yeah, I already said the 426,000. Host community fee revenue from the landfill averaging about $690,000 is also programmed in this fund as revenue. Looking back, the 2024 plan, when we put that together, required about $4.3 million of reductions in carryforwards to make that plan work. Permanent reductions and reprioritizations were about $1.5 million with about $2.8 million in carryforwards. Those are now included in our current year assumptions, so those are added pressures that weren't there last year that we have included. To make this fund work in terms of the financial health of the fund and to really maintain minimum fund balance requirements, we did need to program additional debt financing with the equipment certificates for 2025 through 2029. So as part of that, anywhere from about $1 million to $2 million annually to really make this fund work in terms of the financial, keeping us in a good financial place in this fund. With that, additional future debt does require annual debt service levies, so those will be included when we come back. Those will be worked into the FMP in terms of total tax levy projections for 2026 through 2029. So, and they create additional tax levy pressure at the end of five years. If we do issue the equipment certificates that we planned, we would have close to $800,000 to $1 million in additional debt levy related to those certificates. Here's the financial projections in the Equipment and Vehicle Fund. As I think I mentioned earlier, in 2024, you do see a pretty large expenditure, about $6.6 million. $3.1 million of that is carryforwards from 2022 to 2023 for vehicles and equipment that we still, you know, hadn't received in those years and carried forward for expenditure once we received those. So those are, that is included in 2024. In 2025, you can see our projections for the capital needs are about six, about six and a half million dollars. That does include 2.2, as I mentioned, $2.2 million in the mobile command, a $400,000 ambulance, and some other, I think, $890,000 in plow trucks. So we do have some significant items that are coming in 2025. We scheduled the equipment certificates right now is our, to cover the mobile command vehicle. If other funding does come through for that mobile command vehicle, we can, we don't have to issue those equipment certificates. So as we look at this plan, even though we have kind of projected equipment certificates, it doesn't tie us to issuing any of that debt. We can certainly, we have some time to make those decisions and really look at that long-term plan. I think once we get the fleet study, that will help inform our decisions as well. But really, we wanted to make sure we were responsibly showing a financial plan for this fund and making sure that we're meeting those fund balance targets. So as you can see, at the end of the five-year planning window, we are just over our target fund balance at just about 1 point, I think just under $2 million here, so. I'll move on to the next fund, the Information Technology Fund. This fund has a one large, very large, major 2025 project that is a $2.8 million for an ERP system that would include the finance components, a budget with a budget, budgeting system, utility billing system, as well as an HR payroll system. So those four areas are planned for within that budget right now, as well as additional projects, 333, or 330,000 in IT infrastructure and 300,000 for staff endpoint device replacements. So those are the major projects scheduled for '25.
I'm so glad to see this. Here's the reason why. All of you have given, those of you who have already given your presentation on your budgets and everything, I know Mike was in this last time, the last work session, and you needed some new software, you're operating on some really old systems. And Jenny, when you presented yours, Alyssa, you're operating on some very old technology and systems. So it is great to see that we're updating a lot of this stuff. I remember when we were on dot matrix and how long it took us to update from that, Tom.
I was there too.
I know, because I'm looking at you because you were there when we were trying to convert from all of that, and here we are. I don't know how old your system is, but the challenges you all put down in your presentation to us shows how old the technology we're operating from. And I don't know, I haven't seen police's work yet to see how old the technology is in some of, all of that. But finally, we're doing something about all of this. Because most of your challenge is what's going well and what isn't going well. Your challenge is we're all updating these systems that you're operating from.
Yeah, it will be a major undertaking because those are some critical systems.
Well, it's good to know that we're doing something about it.
Key assumptions for this fund, right now the fund is receiving 12% increases in their distribution of property taxes. One-time general fund contribution for the ERP system of $390,000 is planned for, that was planned for in last year's budget as well. So along with a one-time utility funding for the ERP system of about $845,000. So those two areas require a substantial amount of service from this system, so those two areas will contribute to this as well.
Jeff, because you gave your report this last work session also, have you caught up on all of your technology? Because I know we made some changes, but I don't know if we caught up to transition all of your technology in your department.
Yeah, I'm mayor and council, so in, yeah, in the Community Development Department presentation, I talked not about updating our technology because we've rolled out our kind of online permitting piece, but kind of the continuous development and improvement of it, right? And making sure that we're kind of enhancing and improving that online experience for the customers and the community on an ongoing basis. So certainly continued investments in the technologies we have.
Okay. I pay attention.
Here is the five-year plan for this fund. Generally speaking, we have, you can see that large investment in 2025 and kind of more steady expenditures over 2026 through 2029. With fund balance really does dip below a little bit, but as you can see in the out years, it is recovering a little bit. That 2025 project really is a big expenditure for this fund, so that's where some of that kind of reduction in fund balances is coming from. The next fund, Infrastructure Trust Fund. Major 2025 projects in this fund, there aren't a lot of them, but they are large. Street improvements, our annual street improvements, including Williams Drive at about $4 million are planned for 2025, as well as a $575,000 county signal replacement project. One thing to note about Williams Drive, we also are receiving a local road improvement funds from the state of Minnesota for $1.5 million to fund the other portion of that project. I believe a million dollars is coming from our MSA allocation with $1.5 million coming from that grant.
We don't have all of your project in this, do we? For 2025 road construction rehabilitation and is that in here?
Yep, that's included.
Because usually it's around $9 to $10 million for road construction, and I'm only seeing four. And this identifies only including, it identifies including Williams Drive. Are you saying that in 2025, you're only going to have little over $5 million in projects?
Madam Mayor, I'll have the CFO answer that question.
Yeah.
The entire funding or funding, funding comes from a number of sources, including utility funds and street assessments, as well as.
This is just above the road.
This is just the property tax and MSA component of that. In addition to that, we have about close to $2 million in annual assessment funding for this, as well as we mentioned a $1.5 million state grant.
And then water and sewer.
And water and sewer utilities. I mean, it varies depending on what work needs to be done on those utilities, but that can be anywhere from 1 to 3 million. So when you think of those 8 to 10 million dollar projects, that's including all components of that project.
This is just above the road, just above the ground stuff.
Infrastructure Trust Fund really just includes the property tax levy and MSA component of the roads. Improvement construction accounts, that kind of that other fund accounts for the street improvements and grants. And then the utility funds house their projects. And you'll see when we, when we look at major projects in the utility funds, you'll see the street improvement component of those, for those areas.
Okay, that's good. And I think when we give the information to our residents, when we have the hearing, we have all of the funding sources identified, and that's where it comes to anywhere between 9 and 10 million dollars because we're doing all of the work above the ground and below the ground.
Yes, Madam Mayor, you're correct on that. And when we issue the final CIP, there is by project the totals, so you can see each component that makes up the total, and that's where you're probably used to seeing those 8 to 10 million dollars in total.
Okay.
Key assumptions in this fund for this year, we don't have any additional debt planned for this fund. The second bullet point is just a reminder, the 2023 budget did include a $1 million property tax levy reduction in the Infrastructure Fund, Trust Fund. That year, we did issue bonds for the property tax levy component of the street projects, so that kind of helped ease that $1 million reduction. We've programmed in a phased return of that levy through 2027, so by 2027, we'll be back to those amounts we were pre-2023. Other assumptions, MSA revenue or municipal state aid construction revenue, we've assumed that to be level through 2029. This is a little bit of a more conservative estimate, but we don't expect large increases in that area, so we did keep funding assumptions for MSA funding from MINDOT at a level amount of about $2.5 million annually.
Did the legislature ever increase that funding at all in the last three years for MSA?
Well, I mean, I think there are maybe increases to the totals, but as a component, you know, there are more and more cities receiving more money. Yeah, so we may not receive as big of a percentage of that total.
Yeah, okay. So what you're saying is that there's no big changes for what we get?
We haven't planned for any, and we haven't heard of any, so at this point, we want to be conservative in making sure that we are planning for the right level. As we find out about our next year's allocation, we'll definitely include that in our planning.
Okay.
In terms of studies, we've got a pavement management plan that we'll be looking at in October. And additionally, you know, we've talked about, we need a study of the ITF to really look at the context of the ITF and address any future challenges. Once, you know, future challenges alongside that pavement management plan, as well as looking at our horizontal infrastructure. So that's another thing we, you know, we plan for the future is really looking at our horizontal infrastructure under the roads.
That's good. Once we understand the pavement management plan, we can take a look at ITF. We hadn't touched that since the recession.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we're already starting work on that, the study of the ITF. Jenny and her team have gone back and looked at the ITF's inception back in the 90s and what was established at the time and what was projected over the course of the coming decades. We're going to do a comparative analysis of what, how that actually has performed, and I think that will shed light on some of the challenges that we have with the ITF. Fact of the matter is, this budget, as it's presented, is pulling forward the base projects that we had identified from last year, in addition to the major projects that Jenny listed. Mayor, to your earlier question, the reason that those neighborhood or arterial street reconstruction projects might not be specifically listed on that slide is those were just highlights, right? The reality is, we're going to learn, we already have learned through the work that's gone into the pavement management plan, that we're going to have to make some fairly significant changes over the course of the next planning period to address street condition. And it's important to us also then to parallel a vulnerability analysis on our water and sewer and that horizontal infrastructure study. All of that data will help us have a comprehensive conversation, probably a couple of work sessions over the course of the next 12 months on the ITF. So that's our, that's our plan coming out of this particular CIP to put us in a position to talk in more detail about how we handle the challenges of the future in this one.
Here's the five-year plan. As Greg mentioned, right now that we have a, we will, we are projected to have a pretty healthy fund balance, keeping in mind that we still have the review of the pavement management plan coming up in the fall. And councilmate, I believe we're going to have discussions about the future and future challenges and increased needs for street projects and street project funding in the future, so that gives us some flexibility to make some of those decisions, as well as make decisions on any other future projects. So right now, as we show, we're showing about $7 million in that fund. We do target about a $2 million balance, so really you think of the difference between that is about $5 million. Again, giving flexibility for future decisions and decisions that may be made subsequent to the pavement management plan and ITF study as we present those in the fall.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the reason that those studies are so important is although this fund looks very healthy by this graph, there's a $5 million delta between the fund balance requirement and ending fund balance generally through the plan. The reality is, we've contemplated in our, in our staff capital budget process this year, in upwards of $25 million worth of projects through the planning window that we could suggest are important for us to consider. So said another way, we know that there are significant. So said another way, we know that there are significant challenges, and we don't want to get ahead of the council in terms of our own work internally to deliver you the pavement management plan, a really good understanding of what's below the ground, so we can make informed decisions of what projects we plan and program for, and frankly, tackle first, and then also parallel that conversation with looking back at how the ITF was originally structured. And we haven't done, we haven't had this conversation in decades, frankly, to talk about how we want the ITF to function in the future, right? So that will be a really important conversation, and I didn't want to get ahead of those conversations with the requests that came through from staff in the ITF this year. They are important requests, we still have them on file, we will be talking about them, but we thought it was important to pull those base commitments through and spend the next year really talking about this fund, so we can address, so we can identify priorities and address needs.
I'll move on to street maintenance. This fund is really funds, maintenance type items that really extend the useful life of our streets, so more of those, as we would think, kind of routine annual maintenance, as well as some right-of-way improvements and some other smaller projects. So as you see here, major 2025 projects, we have about $530,000 in preventative roadway maintenance, about a hundred, just over $100,000 in pavement marking scheduled, and about $84,000, $85,000 in right-of-way maintenance. So generally, these projects are scheduled at about that amount every year, and staff works to identify those areas that they work on annually. So the key assumptions here, the general fund transfers in about $409,000 to this fund annually, this is the planned 2025 transfer. Water and sewer and stormwater funds combined transfer about $277,000 annually. We do inflate that amount every year to account for inflation, but that, these are the 2025 scheduled transfers. This fund is also doing its thing. It's got a, it's got fund balance of just over about $1.2 million, and fund balance requirement in this fund is just over $300,000, I believe. You can see, we generally have, generally revenues cover expenditures in this fund, and that's what we've projected out into the five years. Facilities fund, just a couple things, we've got, we did want to note, as we are, you know, having separate facilities fund financing discussions as the Police City Hall project, with the City, or Police City Hall project. We did want to note a couple things related to that in this fund. This year, the 2025 proposed CIP does include $2.2 million in projects that would be removed if that project moves forward. Not getting ahead of the council, we are just, we are planning those projects now, and, you know, we'll adjust the CIP as decisions are made in the future. We have, staff has estimated $17 million in repair and maintenance needed. If the Police City Hall does not move forward, that is not included in this plan. And certainly, we, if, depending on a decision on that project, we'll, again, adjust the CIP appropriately as we go forward. The last time we looked at kind of the general finance, the general financial information was last Tuesday, July 9th, as we looked at some of those funding strategies. So we don't have an update right now, but we'll look at that plan as we move forward with financing discussions over the next month or so. Major 2025 projects, we have a $500,000 Plaza Concrete Replacement at Ames Center Plant, as well as $200,000 in theatrical lighting at the Ames Center Plant. $300,000 in irrigation improvements at the golf course. $500,000 for the cooling system at the Ice Center, as well as $250,000 for trench drain repairs at the maintenance facility. So this plan does, you know, is accounting for the needs across the city at all city facilities. As we, again, as we work forward on Police City Hall, these capital improvements will also be integrated, so that we're looking at the whole fund as council makes decisions moving forward. Some key assumptions here, host community fees are deposited into this fund. In 2025, we're planning for $429,000. Franchise fees in 2025 are projected to be about $5.2 million. And again, this plan does address facility needs across the city, so we're trying to make sure we're taking care of those facilities that we have and making sure that we're maintaining those facilities. Water and sewer utility fund, major 2025 projects, we, $2.2 million in street improvements, so that is a component of those street improvements we saw in the ITF. $1.5 million for Colonial Hill Colonial Tank Rehab, and $1.4 million for the water treatment plant electrical upgrades. That was one of the items that came out of the municipal water treatment condition assessment, so that is programmed for 2025. Other major 2025 projects, $970,000 for VFD replacements, as well as $960,000 for well rehab. Those were other areas that were identified as critical one and two items in the water treatment plant condition assessment, so those are also, we're also including increased investments in those areas. And then $750,000 in VCP pipelining, I believe that's on the sanitary side. Key assumption in this, key assumptions for this fund, high criticality items are addressed here in the five-year capital plan, those high criticality items came from the water treatment plant condition assessment, so those have been addressed over those five years. We've also engaged LRS again to update the utility rate study. So this fund has major capital projects included. It also has some major operational information, and we're still working on that information. So the five-year plan for this fund, we'll review when we go over that utility rate study in September. Just to kind of, just a reminder, the 2024 study in terms of the utility rates, the water rate was recommended to increase 3.5%, sewer increases were at 7%. I think as we look forward to what we can expect, I think we should expect to see continued pressure on those water rates, just with the increased investments related to the condition assessment, as well as other projects and inflationary pressures that we're facing. I think as we think about the streets program and what may be, what may be the future there, that will add additional pressure here as the water, as we look at horizontal infrastructure and we look at the water component of that, we would assume, or we would expect to see some increases in those projects as well. The stormwater utility fund, this fund, major 2025 projects for this fund include just over a million dollars for street improvements, again, another component of that kind of full project, as we talked about in the ITF. $400,000 in corrugated metal pipe replacement, as well as $400,000 in pond cleanout, so some maintenance items there.
We don't have any copper, right, in our system?
I would turn that question to Mark.
Quick clarification, Mayor, it's lead that we're concerned about. We have, we have a lot of copper for water services. Actually, you'll see weekly on this, we have, I believe, under 350 residential services left to inspect, and so far, we have no confirmed lead services we found. So out of 17,000 services we have, we have 300 residential left, and so no lead so far, so good news.
No lead so far?
Yep.
Okay.
I feel like you have the timid answer, Mayor. How can I give you comfort?
That was a program for us to coordinate that was required by the state, correct?
Actually, federal law.
Yeah, it is, it is. And that's, the other thing is that, I'm so happy, because when the EPA came out with that ruling, and especially when a lot of cities had a lot of lead pipes, and there is a lot of illness out of all of that. They had to make some replacements, and that was, some cities have had them in the ground for decades. In some 100 years, like the big cities. That's a very expensive proposition. Okay, I just want to, since we're doing replacement of corrugated, I was just wondering about.
All right, so key assumptions in the stormwater utility fund, again, like the water and sewer fund, LRS, we've engaged LRS to update our utility rate study, so that includes water, sewer, and stormwater utility rates. 2024 study, rate increases were recommended of 2.5%. Again, financial information for this fund will also be planned for the September fee meeting. There are significant operational activities within this fund as well, so we'll look at those two funds in September on a similar schedule to what we did last year. Here is just kind of a reminder of where we are in the budget calendar and what we have left for 2025. Tonight, we're discussing the 2025 through 2029 CIP plan. August 20th, we will be, we will be back to you with another budget discussion to discuss the proposed 2025 budget and tax levy. August 27th, we've scheduled department strategic plan presentation for the remaining departments. September 10th, discuss the proposed fees and utility rate study, so that will be the meeting, we'll talk about those utility funds as well as, and wrap those, kind of see the full picture of the financial information for those funds. On September 17th, we've got the adopted, to adopt the proposed city and EDA property tax levy. November 26th, we've scheduled time to discuss the 2025 proposed budget if needed. And December 5th, we've scheduled to adopt the city and EDA property tax levy and budget. So that takes us through at least the end of this budget cycle, and that's what we have on the calendar with that. That ends my presentation, but I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Jenny and staff? Okay, very good. Thank you, and I really appreciate all the work that goes into this, and I also really like that we have these studies that inform these numbers, and it's easy to speak to our residents about the pressures when we understand all of these items, as well as because of the study, now we have data-driven information that we can put a story around it, in terms of communicating with our residents and business community. So I really appreciate that. I know it's a lot of work to do the studies, and it's a lot of heavy lifting, but once we have all of that, then we have good information to make decisions from, and I appreciate that a lot.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have a great team that's working not only to complete those capital studies to inform your decision-making, but our finance team alongside each and every person sitting around this table, on the staff side of our organization, has put in tireless effort over the course of the past couple of months to pull this, help Jenny and the team pull this presentation together. We all couldn't do it without Adam and Alyssa and Jenny helping to guide us along the way, so everyone's work in this process has been very important, and everyone around the table has had an opportunity to be a part of something that is very important to our future.
You know, I really appreciate this, because when I'm out in the community and at this last party on the plaza, I was asked a lot of questions about. Well, it started out with, "I can support what you do for police." And I listened very carefully, and I said, "I'm glad that you support police." But police can't function without our HR department who hires the people that they need. And police can't continue to function if there wasn't a finance group that helps pay them, because if there isn't the people who do all of that, they don't get paid. And then I went down each of the departments and talked about the value of every department and how it all supports the function of police. And I said, "And police works very closely with our fire." And both of those organizations can't survive without all of the others. And then I said, "Oh, and we just had a report from our Public Works Department that they're too are in the business of public safety, because their roads aren't taken care of. They can't get to you." And it was a good, I enjoyed having that conversation with our people, and they had a better understanding of the synchronicity and alignment of every department in the city in providing the services that they expect of us. And she went away saying, "I didn't know any of that, I just thought." I said, "Well, police doesn't function by itself. Police needs a lot of people around them to make sure that they can do their work." So with all of these studies, it really fully informs us and helps us to have good information when we encounter our residents and they have questions. So thank you so much for your leadership and for everybody around the table, really appreciate all of you, and for our residents who are watching and any guests, this is the team who does the work that make us who make the decisions look good, because they really do the work that gets things done. So thank you to all of you for the things that you do. And if there are no other comments or questions, we stand adjourned by acclamation. Thank you so much, everyone.